It's four o'clock PM and we're reconvening as a Board of Health. Due to the last public hearing with tabled due to lack of quorum, but today it looks like we do have a quorum. So we can begin and I've got the agenda on the screen here. Hopefully everyone can see that. Please let me know if you cannot.
Looks good to me.
I can see it as well, Jackie.
Would you like me to formally open the public hearing?
I am not sure if we normally do the presentation before we open the public hearing or if we go on ahead and begin with the presentation. Kayla, can you help me remember?
Sure. So we'll start out with a presentation by Public Health followed by any additional information from the applicant and then we can open up the public hearing. And then and take public comments at that time and then we'll close the hearing and have a discussion amongst the board where the board can ask staff for their for any additional information on the request in front of us and then we will vote and take a motion and move on.
Thank you very much. I'm going to switch away from the agenda and over to the staff report. In the staff report that was sent out to all of the Board of Health members. And today, just so we can ensure we do have a quorum, we do have Kayla Marcella. We have Steve Boyle, we have Cornelia Patty and Jeff Feldler. So we do have a quorum today and we'll move forward with the presentation. Today we are here to listen to a variance request for a major repair permit for a modern onsite wastewater treatment system or an OWTS to be installed on an existing property within the property's own drinking water well 100 foot setback. The address that we are talking about today is 6889 Highway 82. This is located in Twin Lakes, Colorado. For those of you that might not be familiar with this process, the applicant and the owner does have the burden of proof to demonstrate that the variance is justified and will pose no greater risk to public health or environment than would a normal water treatment system meeting the Colorado Regulation 43. Here in Lake County, we do require that all septic systems be engineered. And in this case, Mountain Engineering and Testing is the engineering firm that has been retained by the applicant to design the septic system to be in accordance with Colorado Reg 43. In every way possible, in this case, the only setback from the STA, which is the Soil Treatment Area, to the well is going to be infringed upon. In the staff report, we did include the full engineering report. And in this case, I'm going to switch over to a different screen here where I've added colored lines. The septic system proposed to be installed is now kind of in the center of the screen. Hopefully everyone can see this. There's an orange circle that kind of cuts across the soil treatment area of the septic system. That is the concerned setback that in this case, the septic system is within 100 feet of the property and the well. The yellow circle to the north of the septic system field is not going to be infringed upon. It will meet the 100 foot setback. That one, according to the information I received, is also owned by the same owner. But again, it should not be infringed upon. And let's see. The septic system design that has been proposed by the engineers again does meet all of the other requirements designed by or required by the Colorado Reg 43. I'm sorry, did I hear someone start to speak up?
No, I think so. You're still good to go, Jackie.
Okay, so based on the information that I have received from the engineer and from the clients. And after reviewing state reg 43, I believe that this proposal is in compliance to the best of its ability to meet state regulations requirement. And my staff recommendation for the Board of Health would be to approve this variance request for the septic system to be built within the 100 foot setback.
Jackie, are you done or did we lose you?
I'm still here if you can hear me.
Yep, we're good.
Okay. And then when you open the public hearing, I do have one email that would need to be read into comments. Does the client or the client engineer want to speak or give any further evidence or information on this presentation?
I think that you covered most everything that we were concerned about, Jackie.
Great, thank you. Kayla, would you like to open the public hearing?
Yeah, now you can do that. I think Jeff can go ahead and open that public hearing for us.
Yeah, sure. So I have the time as 4:09 on Monday, September 20th. This is formally opening the public hearing for 6889 Highway 82. Sorry, I don't, Jackie, I don't have if there is a the parcel number, okay, 29032400008. Is there a hearing number we need to list as well here? Or just the parcel?
Not that I've ever been aware of.
Okay, great. Just just checking. I haven't done very many of these yet. So a public hearing is open.
The only public comment that I have received to date was an email from Michelle Gott, one of the neighboring properties or adjacent properties. The email was received Tuesday, August 31st at 10:45 AM and it is attached to the staff report. The email reads, Ms. Little Page, my family has been contacted by Lake County as well as Fred Woodcock Jr. regarding a variance for some work being performed on Mr. Woodcock's Twin Lakes property as above referenced. This letter is for the purpose of stipulating that the work proposed on the Woodcock property above reference does not hinder the Gott property, parcel number 29032400006. Door impinges upon our well, which is at a great distance, greater than 100 feet from the proposed drain field. Woodcock property sits roughly to the east of the Gott property and the well on the Gott property is located on the west side of our property. So there is no concern or impingement upon our well. So this says, I am writing in this email on behalf of the request of my father, Richard Gott, who is undergoing some serious health issues at this time, my brother Jeff, who is copied here with as well. And I both hold PAO to speak on behalf of our parents. If we can resolve this and not interrupt our parents and their focus at this time, that would be appreciated. However, my mom Carolyn Gott can be reached at and it lists her phone number. Feel free to reach out if you have any further questions or concerns or statements herein if it's not Michelle Gott. So again, that is the only public comments that I have received via email regarding this variance request.
Okay, thank you. That seems in order. I think it's appropriate with, especially with the power of attorney listed there. I think we have a small enough number. I think if anyone who is on here wants to make a public comment, they could just go ahead and unmute. Not hearing anyone, not seeing any hands. Oh, Paul.
Thanks. Thank you. I just would suggest that Jackie, maybe you could speak to the record as to why there is 100 foot setback and from the well and your thoughts about why you think this will not be an issue.
Absolutely. So there is a 100 foot setback requirement according to state regulation 43, which is the Onsite Wastewater Treatment System Regulation. It's the minimum setback requirement to try to protect wells from groundwater contamination from septic system soil treatment areas. At this point in time, I believe that in this case, because this is an existing home and we want to try to keep people in existing homes and not have to declare them uninhabitable because they can't have a septic system or a well. I believe that it is in the best interest of the parties that the variance can be used as a tool to keep them into their residence, keep their homes occupied. There is additional water treatment options available. There are filters or drinking water treatment that can be added to the well taps for the house if there are drinking water concerns further. I professionally do believe that this is the best option to keep these folks' property habitable. It is allowed by the state. They do allow these kinds of variances. The 100 foot setback again is the minimum requirement of the state to set that minimum standard to try to keep groundwater quality regulation set statewide, if that makes sense.
It does to me. So what appears to be now a 75 foot setback or thereabouts is acceptable to you. Is that right?
That is correct. Because again, if that homeowner whose well is being infringed upon has any concerns, you know, we strongly recommend annual well water testing for all residents that have a well. So we would still strongly recommend that this homeowner or any future homeowners of this property continue to do annual well water testing. And if they ever have any questions or concerns about their well water, there are certainly options available out there to add well filters or chlorine treatment systems. There are various types of tools that can be further used to maintain the well water safety for the homeowners and residents.
So previously, the system was on a seepage pit?
That is correct.
And this is, this is now a true OWTS as opposed to a seepage pit. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
I can't think that the situation could be any better than is being proposed.
This new modern system is going to be well, it's supposed to be designed to be more groundwater conscious than the previous system. Correct.
Okay. Any additional comment from the, from the applicant or the engineer on that point?
Sure, I can chime in on that. This is Frank Block with Mountain Engineering and Testing. As, as Jackie was, was saying there, this is a newer OWTS system that employs a sand filter, pressure distribution and a chamber system, which does qualify it as a treatment level three system, which in certain jurisdictions does apply, apply it for a reduction to 75 feet to the well. Lake County does not recognize that except in situations like this, you know, with a variance. But it is commonly accepted in Colorado to reduce that setback to 75 feet with a system such as this.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for that. I'm not seeing any other public comment. There's a note in the chat from Kelly Sweeney. And maybe we just confirm this information that the only well within 100 feet is, is the well of, of, of the applying property.
That is correct.
Great. Thank you for confirming that. I'm not seeing any other requests for making public comments. So if I understand the procedure here, oh. Steve, Steve, I think, I think the order we go in is that we close a public comment and then we have a discussion of the Board of Health. Gotcha. So I think at this point, again, sorry for not being up on the procedure here. Do we need a motion to close the public hearing portion of this?
No, Jeff, you can just close it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah. So I think we've given ample, ample opportunity for people to to request all the comments and we'll close the public hearing of the comment portion of this and move into board discussion. I think Steve, you are up.
Just had a question mostly for information. The old system, can that stay in place or where there be any requirement to remove the old system?
The old system in this case can be abandoned in place and that is the recommendations by the state of Colorado. They do allow and recommend that we just leave them in place. It would cause greater disturbance to the ground to tear it out and try to backfill it than to just leave it in place.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Any other members with members of the board with questions or comments?
I don't have any, any questions or comments. I think it sounds relatively straightforward myself.
Yeah, same, same here for my, my part, especially that point about, you know, not impinging on any, any other wells. It's an important one for me. Any other board members?
Cornelia, or do you have any, any questions or concerns?
No, I'm fine with it.
All right. So with that, I will, I will make a motion to approve the variance system or variance request allowing a major repair permit for the proposed modern onsite wastewater treatment system to be installed and engineered on the existing property and within the property's drinking well water 100 foot setback at 6889 Highway 82, Twin Lakes, Colorado, 81251. Parcel number 2903-240-00-008 in Lake County, Colorado.
I'll second.
No further discussion from me.
Any other board members with additional discussion before we go to a vote? Hearing none. I'll just quickly apologize to the applicants for, for the delay in this. But it looks like we're getting through it pretty promptly here. So I'll go ahead and do the vote. So Kayla?
Aye.
Right. Steve?
Aye.
Right. Cornelia?
Aye.
Right. And for myself, I am sorry, I'm bouncing between screens. Am I missing anyone else who is present? Okay, we have quorum and we have a approval of the motion to approve the variance request.
Thank you. Jackie, do you have one? We have one additional item, I believe, on our agenda, correct?
Yes, let me switch back over to the to the addition to the agenda was to discuss COVID-19 updates, Board of Health structure. Colleen, did you want to run with that?
Yeah. Hey guys, how's it going? I am going to keep my video off just because it, Jackie and I are both in this place right now and sometimes it makes it much more difficult. So yeah, so basically we had some conversations around COVID-19. I did report out to the Board of County Commissioners today as far as cases. So in the last week, we have had, you know, under 10 cases for the week. We continue to monitor the situation. We did have a big spike in August, kind of right around back to school time, kind of people moving around and settling back in. We continue to find that our cases are much more prevalent in our unvaccinated population. We continue to educate the population around, you know, needing to vaccinate. We are going to do a big push out to the folks that have not gotten their second dose. So that almost 600 people have not come back for their second dose. So we're going to use some of the databases that we have that have captured some of that information and get some text messaging and or emails out to these folks. Ensuring that we have at least, you know, doing our best faith effort to get those folks into getting them fully vaccinated, which will be super helpful in our numbers overall and getting us closer to herd immunity, so to speak. So we do know that the Delta variant is still the dominant one. I have been doing and you guys have been receiving the copy of our situational awareness report that we started a couple of weeks ago and we have a weekly meeting on Thursdays to kind of update the policy group as well as our Board of Health. And so it does have all the most latest and greatest up to date information because we do get updates from the state on Wednesday. It's pretty ideal to be able to input that information into our situational awareness report come Thursday. Does anyone have any questions about COVID-19 at this point in time?
I don't think anybody has anything COVID-19 specific. I think this is a really good opportunity for us to talk about the Board of Health's role with COVID-19 going forward. Colleen, do you have any expectations of the Board of Health?
Yeah, I think that is a great segue. So I did add to this, the Board of Health structure. So Jackie and I have gone back to our previous years ago trying to put together our minutes and when we initially went into a five person board role. And at that point in time, the first person who came on into our board as an additional member was Steve Boyle, which was in October of 2016. So Steve would be according to the Board of Health structure and the guidebook that we get from the state that people should be serving or, you know, members are serving five year terms. So we would need to be ushering Steve out as of October, out of the Board of Health. I know this is news to you, Steve, and it might be relief all at the same time. So, so that means that Steve would be coming off the board in October. The next piece of the puzzle is we brought on both Cornelia and Kim in the last two years. In the interim, we have hired Kim into our environmental health program. We are finding because so much of the work that we've been doing besides COVID has been around environmental health and variances and Kim is a big person who's doing a lot of the intakes and getting the letters ready. And so we recognize too that that is becoming more of a conflict of interest. And so we would be looking to bring Kim off the board and then that would leave Cornelia at this point in time. And the conversation that Jackie and I've had and have actually, you know, discussed this with some other folks is, is there opportunity because of COVID? And the nature, a lot of folks who sign onto the board, like I think of our community at large members like Steve, Kim and Cornelia, you know, they signed on with a thought of like, oh, four meetings a year. That's great. Every once in a while, we might have a variance. And as we all know, that has changed dramatically with the COVID-19 response. And we recognize how hard it is when, you know, public health, you know, at the drop of the dime is, is calling a meeting, especially in the beginning. And even now, we're kind of bringing, you know, doing our weekly situational meetings, you know, anticipating, anticipating a surge, you know, into the fall, winter as flu comes online and you know, whatever the next variant might look like. And so with that being said, and Kayla, you're probably like, I don't know where we're going with this, but I'll explain where we're going with this. I in the thought of because we're in COVID and because we need, you know, answers, you know, sooner, we need that flexibility. And I feel like we've really taxed our community at large members. Not to say, you know, our Board of County Commissioners who are on that currently, I am thinking about the opportunity to go back to the three person board and because of the size of our county, that allows us to use the Board of County Commissioners as our Board of Health. I feel that through COVID and especially moving forward, that might streamline some of the operations, some of the decisions that have to be made and feel like we kind of have that, that ability and that flexibility to, and that access, I will say, to the Board of County Commissioners to kind of mobilize pretty quickly if need be. So I'm just putting that on the table. We don't have to make a decision today. I did want to share that because also, you know, we are finding that it has been difficult as, you know, things are coming up in, you know, across the board of who's available, who's not that, you know, if we can bring it back to the Board of County Commissioners, that might put us in a better position moving forward, making decisions, especially as we, you know, look at all of these variances and those kinds of things. Cause then we can kind of adapt it through meetings that are already occurring with the Board of County Commissioners and then shifting into a Board of Health, like doing, which we have done in the past. So they're already together in a room and or on Zoom. And then, you know, we have the ability to kind of piggyback on some of their meetings, which also streamlines the process and trying to organize folks. So I will stop there. I feel like I'm going on and on. Anybody? We would have to reach out to Chris Floyd and the state to ensure that if we were to go back, how do we, you know, document that properly? I did go back in the minutes. And basically it shows that we had a discussion at a Board of Health meeting and then three months later, we brought Steve on board. So there wasn't this big, you know, public you know, piece to it, but you know, open to whatever anyone has to say. And I'm done. I'm really done now.
Colleen, thanks for putting that out there. I think, I think personally it might be preferred just because of our ability to pivot relatively quickly. And you know, there was some, some legislation that was proposed to eliminate the Board of County Commissioners from the Board of Health. And it didn't pass the state legislature particularly because they found in smaller communities, it was really difficult to engage community members with the task of making decisions on like public health orders that would affect so many people and they didn't really want to be in, in that position. And so I think it makes a lot of sense for us to pivot back to that. And also gives us an opportunity to keep these meetings more regular and to, to make some more forward progress on things like our Regulation 43 rewrites and, and those types of things. I think that makes a lot of I think that makes a lot of sense. But I'll defer to Jeff and Sarah if they want to jump in, because I don't want to volunteer them for some.
Well, also, I just for me, I, I don't have the experience of having made it through the whole COVID year in, in this role. But I mean, in terms of, in terms of workload, I'm already on year. So I, I, I think that the workload isn't an issue. And I think I agree with the points that Colleen made just about. But yeah, I mean, so the, the efficiency, having it be the commissioners and not putting a load on some of the community at large members. So I think I'm feeling good about that suggested direction.
Hi.
Oh, go ahead. I didn't know if you were still here. So go ahead.
I'm here. I, I, I also appreciate you putting that out there, Colleen. I think it makes a lot of sense. And, and there were some, there's some strengths in, in having the board and those efficiencies as well as, you know, maybe a lot of those community members not really signing up to make those kinds of decisions. As well as, you know, what we're seeing with a lot of other land use issues and how those overlap. You know, I know our, our current Board of Health and maybe in the past may not have been as up to speed on some of the decisions being made here that affect or are in line or could not be potentially in line with some land use policies and, and movement. So I am happy to, to entertain that and move towards that as well.
Well, thank you all. And so, you know, we would need to read, I just need to reach out to Chris. We kind of posed like a hypothetical to her last week. But, but maybe Kayla, that's something you can help elevate. Say, hey, what would we need to do to make it like official, make sure we do it right, well documented? And, you know, and I would ask for that flexibility of, you know, post-COVID in the sense of, you know, hey, we can revisit this in the future and just leave it open. But I do, because of, you know, what we've seen in anticipating what might be coming down the pike, it really, I think, will help streamline. So Cornelia, because we were already going to be ushering Steve out and knowing that we needed to have Kim step down because of that conflict, like, Cornelia really comes, how you're feeling and hopefully it doesn't feel like totally horrible in a sense of like, we don't need you. And that's not really the, the intent. The intent is truly to free you and, and obviously always willing to have you weigh in on, on issues and things that we have going on.
Colleen, Grand County was actually really working on including, including members of the community as kind of an advisory board, similar to like what we have with the airport advisory board where, you know, the Board of Commissioner still makes the ultimate decisions, but they can present recommendations and can participate as advisory to the Board of Health. And so it might be worth some conversation around what that structure looks like to be able to incorporate some of that community feedback, because I do feel like that some of that is really important to drive some of these decision-making, some of this decision-making. But just some food for thought that maybe we could reach out to them and see what that advisory board really looks like and how they utilize that advisory board.
That sounds good. Yeah, I'm like said, I'm, I'm not opposed, but yes, I'm not opposed. I am open. At this point in time, I just don't want to necessarily be now reporting to two different boards versus trying to streamline my time as well. So I would really be interested in that model and, and how that might work as well, because I do agree. And maybe there's opportunity to, to figure out how we better message like our Board of Health meetings and what's happening and, and getting more community input just at those, you know, at the Board of Health meetings as well.
Cool. Sounds good. Um, okay, so with, with that, go ahead, Sarah. I think, did you need any, did you want to say something else?
Well, I was, I was going to say along those lines, you know, it could, it could be a, a board of five with the Board of Commissioners as the quorum essentially, if we could not get other participation. Just putting that out there as well. But, and then you wouldn't have two different boards to report to, Colleen. I can appreciate that.
Yeah, I think, um, Colleen, if it sounds, um, like, okay, I can set some time up with Chris and you when we do our next department check-in and then we can kind of, kind of figure out a plan and go from there. And maybe we can present it at our next Board of Health meeting, because I see that we have to schedule another one, at least 20 business days out. So that would give us enough time and we can bring this back to the, back to the Board of Health at our next meeting.
Yeah, and I think the piece of the puzzle, Sarah, of having three commissioners, if you do have a board of five, you cannot have a majority of one, like one type of representation. So you guys would actually tilt it. Hence why when we went to five, that's why we had to have one commissioner step down from it. So it wouldn't be having an abundance of one physician represented, like Board Health. Like if we had five doctors, we couldn't have five doctors, like that kind of thing. So it would have to be, if we're going to do Board of County Commissioners, it would have to be a three-person board. But yes, we can discuss setting up a time for next month. And in the interim, we'll kind of figure out some things, email some things and, and come to conclusion in the October meeting. So whenever you guys want to set that up. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So this is Jackie. The requirement for 20 business days is what I need to give legal notice for the next public hearing. I do have a public hearing that needs to be put in order. It's another one of these septic systems for an existing home. And it has an issue with the wells of two properties. The property of the existing home and then a neighboring property where there are two wells that are within the 100-foot setback. So that one is going to be very similar to what we just did today. However, there is a neighboring well that will also have some issues that we are looking into and trying to get their permission or their understanding made known that they're going to come up for a public hearing. My recommendation would be October 11th as the soonest date, if that date would work for you all. That is a Monday, October 11th. And I would say 4:00 PM works for me. If that would work for all of you.
Jackie, I will unfortunately be traveling that day and out of town.
Because I believe for that one, we would still have Steve and Cornelia. Is that correct, Colleen? Because we have not made any decisions. So Cornelia and Steve and Jeff, would Monday, the 11th work for you? Or do you have any recommendations for that Tuesday?
I don't think that'll Yeah, yeah, Jackie, I don't think that'll work for me either, that day.
The, and the, the following day would work for me at the same time, that Tuesday. And that also might avoid a possible conflict with planning commission meetings.
Possibly Tuesday, the 12th at 4:00 PM?
Yeah, I think that would work or the, or that Thursday too. Either one of those would be great for me, Jackie.
And that'll work for me as well.
Homeowners are very eager to have this heard as quickly as possible. That was the only reason I was trying to push it for the beginning of the week, but open the other day. Sorry, Cornelia, what were you saying?
No, that'll work for me as well on the 12th.
Steve, would you be available on Tuesday, the 12th, 4:00 PM? And that's the 12th of October?
Both of October works.
Great. Then I will write up the legal notices and get the next Board of Health meeting scheduled for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, October 12th at 4:00 PM.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you all.
Okay, any other issues before we entertain a motion to adjourn? I think we're all set on scheduling and everything on that agenda item. So yeah, I think just entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move that we adjourn.
A second. Well, I'll second.
Okay. No discussion, I don't believe, so.
Kayla?
Yes.
Yes, Steve?
Yes.
Cornelia?
Uh huh.
Great. And I'll vote yes. So 4:43 on my watch, we are adjourned.
Thank you very much, y'all. Have a great, great night.
Thank you.